Okay, the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called. First we'll start with the Office of the Office, which is the Minister of the Office, Commissioner Tom Hinkley and Commissioner Brian Bowes.
Yes, sir. If you can both just stand and raise your right hands. And just repeat after me, I, and then state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully execute. The duties of the office. Of member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For the city of Friendswood. Of state of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect and defend. The Constitution and laws. Of the United States. And of this state. And the Charter and ordinances of the city. So help me God. Thank you both.
Sorry about that. I'll start that over. In order to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and our possible action. I do have two cards. If there's anybody else who would like to speak, if you could please fill out the form on the back table and provide them to Ms. Becky. So first we have Mr. David Townsend. If you could just come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm David Townsend. I'm a forty-five year resident of Friendswood. I live at thirteen oh three Sunset Drive. And I'm here representing the Sun Park Estate Homeowners Association. And you have a copy of what I want to talk about. And primarily concerned about the impact of Sterling Builders new subdivision on flooding to the Sun Park Estates subdivision. But we've struggled with a flooding problem for years because of Klein Primary. We get about two thirds of the property drains to our subdivision. And we don't want to make it worse. And we're concerned about any increase in coverage on lots. We're concerned about not having a drainage plan, those types of things. Just real quickly, let me step you through. If you're not familiar with Sun Park Estates, we're a, we basically surround the property on two sides. And. Our real concern is related to item six A on the agenda, the increase in coverage. That was the main thing we wanted to talk about tonight. If you look over on the third slide, third slide, fourth slide. In red, there is a drainage easement that runs on the northwest side of Sun Park Estates. That drainage easement drains about two thirds of what was Klein Primary property. And, or it's supposed to drain about two thirds of what was Klein Primary property. It's a city drainage easement. It's supposed to be maintained by the city. Kind of the bottom line is it hasn't been well maintained. We've had ongoing drainage problem for years. And our subdivision will flood and Sunset Drive floods also. Sunset Drive floods to the point that people can't get into the subdivision. It's that bad. The drainage ditch, like I said, is most likely undersized. It hasn't been maintained. And at the end of the drainage ditch, there is an entrance into the storm sewer that's under Sunset Drive. That storm sewer is also undersized. So basically, there's not enough capacity to drain what's there right now. And if you flip through the next several slides, starting with the one that's dated one four ninety-eight. This started about eight months after I built my house on Sunset Drive. We moved in there and eight months later, all of a sudden, we find out we're flooded. And it just goes on and on. The flooding, we get. Two thirds of that property drains right into our backyard and into the other homeowners in Sun Park Estates. And it, you know, that ninety-eight flood was pretty bad. Allison was even worse. You know, you look at Allison, it was almost up to houses. It was completely flooding Sunset Drive. You couldn't get in. In Allison, we got within about a foot of putting houses underwater, just because of the drainage coming from Klein Primary into the neighborhood. I'm out of time?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you can flip through and see the rest of the pictures. What we would like to request is that you not approve increasing the coverage on the lots. Because a five percent increase in coverage going from thirty-five to forty percent is actually a fourteen point three percent reduction in area to absorb water. So that was what our homeowners association would like to request.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Next, Mr. Adam Hill.
Are you Adam Hill, A twelve by our Meadow. I am the developer and going to be the builder on the Klein project. There were seventy-six thousand impervious cover feet at, that we tore down, tearing down at Klein now. We're coming back with far less and quoting a nineteen ninety-eight flooding. I didn't hear anything about Harvey. This city has been committed to improving drainage for as long as I've been doing it. We have, we're close to an approved drainage plan. We have drains along the back of Sun Park. We're prepared to handle all of the water that they put on us. And, you know, between the drainage district and the city, they're not going to let us do anything that impacts any other homeowner. I don't know from nineteen ninety-eight, I guess Allison was two thousand and one. No mention of Harvey. I'm certain this has already been corrected. But we are putting far less impervious cover back. I am here to answer any questions for you on just filling in the stringent setbacks that the city already has. But all the math is there. We've submitted it. We've been criticized by it and we're going to improve the drainage. We're not going to hurt anybody. We don't want to hurt anybody. We want to be good neighbors and I'm here to answer any questions to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else? No? All right, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separate. Item A, consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting held Thursday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion? Okay. Mr. Mann, Commissioner Conrad. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes. Next are our action items. Item A, consider election of a chairperson and a vice chairperson. Do we have a motion for nomination of a chairperson?
I move that Tom Hinkley be the chairperson and Marcus be the vice chairperson.
Any other nominations? Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to, for Tom Hinkley as the chairperson. Do we have? Okay, so yeah, we need to open that with a motion and a second, right?
Right, you've got a motion, so you just need a second.
Do we, do we do individually or can we just do them both?
You can do both at the same time.
Okay. Okay. So can we, you have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes.
I'd like to thank you both for the work that you do.
Thank you, sir. Next, item B, consider approving a site plan amendment for the location of four or five West Parkwood Avenue for the addition of a detached covered patio. Aubrey, can you give the staff summary?
So this is the retail center in the HEB parking lot where Minchies is on the end of the building. I think there's Cato, a few businesses. So this suite is on the, if you're facing the building on the left end, and there's a coffee shop that's building out the space. And they would like to add a detached covered patio area. There is currently a fenced-in area in that grassy part at the end of the building that's going to remain. No trees will be removed. This will just be at the end of the parking lot. It's a twenty-five by fifty structure.
Okay. Is he asking here, would you like to speak? Would you like to, if you'd like to introduce yourself and anything you'd like to present?
Yes, my name is Aman Lefshara. To be honest, I'm here to, if you guys have any questions, my understanding that's like from engineering point of view, everything was approved, I think. For detached, for the drainage and detention, I did submit the paperwork, but I was told that it needs to be approved with this committee. So if you have any question, I.
You can feel free to sit or you can stand in case anybody does have any questions. It's up to you at this point. There may be some questions, I'm not sure. Okay?
Okay.
Or you have the, you can sit down if you want, or you could just remain standing in case there are questions. Okay. Okay. Under discussion, anybody? Commissioner Rose, Commissioner Bowes?
It's all been approved by the engineering department.
Yes, yeah, there was capacity in the existing detention pond. It was a pretty small area, so they were able to verify that. And the building plans are approved by the building officials, so this is the last step.
And this is not going to interfere with any of the trees that are there?
No. Nope.
Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Phillips?
No questions.
Commissioner Conrad?
Aesthetically, it looks good. I mean, I'll bet it. No questions.
Very good. Commissioner Mann?
I took a look at it and I feel like there's the big oaks that run right along there that everyone says it's not going to touch a tree, but it doesn't look that way. Have we verified for sure? Yeah?
So when you, if you're looking on Google Earth, it does look really bad, but I think it's the shadow of the tree. When you physically go out there, the tree is nowhere near where the shade structure.
I was there, I was walking it today, so maybe I didn't know exactly where it was going to be, but, okay, if it's not going to touch, those are pretty big oaks there.
Yeah, no, they're, they like sand wit, they're on obsidens.
Okay, awesome. That's all, the only question I had.
For me, I think it adds a nice little covered outdoor area, so I don't have any opposition. So do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Rose and Commissioner Conrad. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, next, discussion. Discuss lot coverage requirements in the single-family residential zone district as contained in the residential regulation matrix contained in section seven P and/or section twenty definitions of appendix C zoning of the city code. Aubrey, staff summary?
Yes, so the R July meeting, we received the request from Adam to increase the lot coverage from thirty-five to forty percent. So just a little bit of background on the regulation. So currently, the, it's for the single-family residential zoning district, the maximum lot coverage is thirty-five percent. And that is for primary and, primary structures and accessory structures, including, you know, garages, whether they're attached or detached. Anything basically like above the ground. We don't count swimming pools. We don't count driveways or anything like that. The current lot coverage, like definition was adopted in nineteen ninety-seven. Lot coverage is interpreted differently by different cities. So some cities include all impervious cover, including driveways and, you know, anything concrete on the site would be counted towards their requirements. And it's also interpreted differently as far as sometimes it's an aesthetic interpretation, which is how we're interpreting it, where it affects the character of your neighborhoods by the bulk of the building. And then, like I said, other cities, it's included in their drainage calculations, so it's more than just, you know, bulk. It's the impervious cover aspect. So we did a short list of city comparisons, including Pearland and League City and a few other cities that we typically use for comparisons because they're similar to us in demographics. So it was in your packet material. Go over that real quick. So, so ours is thirty-five. We're under roof only for the single-family residential district. So the other cities that we compared, we also compared similar zoning districts that are of similar size. So the city of Capel is thirty-five percent. They're under roof only, and that's for their SF twelve zoning district. League City is fifty-five percent, but that's determined by their drainage reports, and they do include concrete and pools. The city of Shirts is fifty percent. Again, they include concrete and pools, and that's for their R one district. The city of Tomball was forty percent, under roof only, and that's for their SF nine district. So if we looked at change into forty, that might be a city we want to look at in a little more detail. And then the city of Pearland is sixty percent for their SFR twelve district, which is like eleven or twelve thousand square foot lots. And they do include concrete and pools in their calculations as well. So if the commission would like to change the regulation, a change to our, the regulation matrix is required. So that would include, we would draft an ordinance for y'all to review. We would hold a public hearing. Y'all would make a recommendation, and then we would have a public hearing with city council, and then they would have one reading of an ordinance to change the requirement. So it's, we don't have to make a decision tonight. This is simply discussion, just to kind of, you know, discuss it, bounce some ideas off each other, see if we want to move forward, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, so the, just to clarify what you said, we don't have to say, yes, we're going to change this, no, we're not going to change it. We can say it's worth further discussion if we prefer, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. We'll start discussion with Commissioner Phillips.
Well, okay, so I have just, I have a couple of questions in my, just in my own analysis based on something that was said at the July twenty-fourth meeting, actually. And so there was some discussion for what was presented was that part of the expansion, part of the reason that they might want to expand that footprint is that, you know, folks want more space. But this is like their forever home. These are folks that are, they're thinking that they want a one-story, right? But at the same time, it was mentioned that, you know, people aren't really wanting more maintenance in the yards. And so it's a little bit in conflict in my mind that, on the one hand, you're talking about, you know, more maintenance for a larger home, but less maintenance for the yard area because you're going to have a larger footprint on the lot. And so that was just one of the things that kind of stuck with me, that I'm not really sure that I'm clear exactly what the intent was on that. And then I also think that just the character of Friendswood with the larger lots and the wooded areas, you know, are we getting further away from what the, that original character is? Which is what drew me to the area when I originally moved here thirteen years ago. So, I mean, that's, that's my concern. I don't really, I didn't actually have a lot of concern as far as the drainage goes, but certainly, I mean, there's another wrinkle with what was presented earlier today in public comments, so I think that bears some further discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Conrad?
I feel pretty much the same way, but I just think that the five percent, they're not, you know, it's not that big of a change. Then again, we need to discuss this. I mean, this is, you know, we have some large lots, but then there's some, you know, the newer homes, they don't have that big of a footprint, so it's in five percent, the difference between what we have now and what is proposed is not that big.
Commissioner Mann?
Great points, both of y'all. I, I do understand, and I'm glad that there's the letter in here. Because I do understand the single-story house, get a little bit bigger, but have the nice house that we have here in Friendswood that people want. And so our whole job is to make it so that people can have what they want. I do think that drainage is a huge consideration. I do think that the GCCD has done a very good job recently. I know that Friendswood as a whole has gotten better at it. I think on a separate subject, we need to review the drainage as it sits right now. But I also think that part of what the neighborhoods that we have, it's not the houses, and I don't want to throw a city next door to us under the bus. But I see, I could jump from roof to roof on some of those houses as they've expanded, so I don't want that look either. But I also, if that's what everybody wants, or if that's what people are looking for, then I think the market kind of supplies or demand. But I definitely think further discussion is warranted because you could also get larger lots, and then you can have that same-sized house on a larger lot to, so that we don't have that look. And we can still have the trees and the space that we want, vice the houses that are smashed on top of each other, so. But all good thoughts from you. And I hadn't thought about the conflict of large house, little yard, and the conflict of the amount of work you want for your forever home, but that's it. Thanks. Sorry for rambling, actually.
Commissioner Anderson?
I appreciate the comments from, that were made early. I really hadn't considered the flooding issue. I've lived in Friendswood for thirty-one years, close to Clear Creek, and the flood has always been a concern. But lately, you know, all the work that's been done by the county, I wonder if the slides we have are really going to be as applicable as it would have been because there's been a lot of, I mean, I've noticed because every time there's a rain, I notice what the flooding conditions are, so I'm left a little bit uncomfortable with not knowing the potential flooding impact because, because I've lived it, you know, being close to the creek. So that's one of the concerns that still happen. I think that a lot of it has been addressed because the pictures that we have here are, you know, from two thousand and one and two thousand whatever, I forget, but I think ever since the money's been spent cleaning up things, I think that flooding is probably not as big an issue. I'd like to know more about how they just consider today, but I hadn't really considered the size of a lot yet. Been a lot of information that I'm sort of conflicted right now because it's, I can see the benefits both ways and also the concerns both ways.
Commissioner Bowes?
Well, as mentioned earlier about the flooding from Harvey, I think that point is a little moot because, hell, when you have fifty-two inches of rain, everything was flooded. I mean, there was just nowhere for it to go. So I think we have to look more at, and maybe nineteen ninety-eight is a little further past, but yes, we need to look at this drainage because it's, the more concrete we add, the more footprint we add, yeah, it's going to affect the flow of water. And if that drainage line isn't well-kept, if it's not taken care of by the city, there's definitely going to be some problems.
Commissioner Rose?
You know, I always have comments. I'd like to back up and look. We've got thirty-five percent right now, and I think the history behind that is if anyone has any other information than this, basically, Friendswood wanted larger lots. Wanted to, we kind of pride ourselves on that, and Adam's built on larger lots, and he's been a proponent of that, and that's great. So I think one of the reasons we do that, though, is to keep more green space, more distance between us and our neighbors, but not too far. Some of us further than others. And then that kind of forces us to put larger houses on larger lots, too, so the bigger the house, the bigger the lot. It's worked pretty well up until now, and even I run across the restrictive aspects of the thirty-five foot, doing what I do all the time as well. I'm not opposed to changing it or looking at it further. It's been a while since we've looked at that. But I, I was thinking if we changed it, if we were to go and make it forty percent, trying to think ahead, what domino effect that might have. And so I have a list of things that I was considering or I would like to suggest if we do change it. So the first one being, if we go to forty percent on a lot, buildable area, then let's restrict that to single-story houses. So instead of doing, you know, ten thousand square foot house on a smaller lot, we're not going to get the effect of West U or Bay Oaks. It becomes a massing thing. So you're still twenty feet from your neighbor, but the bigger the house, the closer it feels. So I'd like to suggest that, forty percent on just one-story houses. So if we're going to do that, then we have to define what a one-story house is. And so I would like to propose that a one-story house, by definition, would be a house that has no set of stairs, no bonus space and no walk-in attic. And then on top of that, I think if it's just going to be a one-story house, we have a forty-foot building height right now. Let's drop that down lower for the single-story houses. Let's give it thirty feet or something. I don't know what that number is. I'm just thinking out loud. But something more proportional, and even with twelve-foot plate heights, twelve-foot ceilings, that's still pretty high. So keeping that mass down low on a more personal level. And then maybe also look at total impervious cover, which is what all you guys have been saying about flooding. So does that play into it? Maybe do a little more research on how much that is. And Aubrey did some research on actual lot coverage on the different sized lots, but we can get into that later if everybody wants to go there. So I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I think it works fine at thirty-five percent, but I'm not opposed to looking at forty, but I think it needs more restrictions if we're going to do it. And for me, it all goes back to the massing, the scale, the green space, the identity of Friendswood, the look.
Before you go, can I add something? Before you round it out, awesome point. That's the point I was, one of the points I was trying to make for one story, if we keep them one stories. But now you have to think long-term, so I buy this house. It's one-story. We've heard it a thousand times. I was told I could do whatever I want with this. And then now they're adding on and building up, so then we got to add restrictions for that. So you start opening up some stuff there. That, and then the other comment, I do think, as we talked about footprint for this specific, you were saying it's less than Klein is right now, correct? Yeah, yeah, far less. So, so there would be actually, there should be less water running off the property from there. Just wanted to get that out there as well.
Well, just to clarify, since you say that, everybody keep in mind that this, this topic here is brought up by a person developing a piece of property right now, but this isn't specific to this project. If we make any changes, this affects every other project going forward in the city. Okay? So just so everybody understands that. I'm not opposed to looking at it. I think I'd like to possibly talk to Tomball and see if they had any, any second thoughts after the increase there, so forty. I think we should talk to city engineering a little bit more, maybe a couple of us have a meeting, maybe with them, maybe with the Drainage District, and just kind of get their opinions on the added. But I think it's definitely a subject we should put on our radar to discuss.
Okay. I do have, I did get verification from our city engineer, so for drainage calculations, a standard drainage calculation is at fifty-five percent, and it can be more with that if they justify it with their drainage plans. So from a drainage perspective, it's fifty-five percent total impervious cover. Yes. And then also, I put together a pretty, so it's not to scale like at all, but just trying to think. Just trying to think, um, so excuse my little kindergarten drawings. But, um, so just a ninety foot lot versus a hundred and twenty foot lot and then the square footage is, um. Versus, you know, for the two and I can't, I'm gonna have it printed coffee somewhere. Let's see, hang on one sec. I know I printed it, cause I can't read that. Uh, anyways, okay. So, the ninety by one thirty lot is eleven thousand seven hundred and square feet. So, if you t- um, if you minus out the setback area, so the twenty-five on the front, twenty-five on the rear and then ten on each side. It's like four thousand sixty square feet. Um, at forty, sorry, hang on. Yeah, forty-six hundred square feet, um, would be the area inside the setbacks. Our thirty-five percent limit is four thousand sixty square feet. Um, so if we went to the forty percent, um, it would be four thousand six hundred and forty, um, square feet. So, you would be filling the envelope, which is what, um, Adam had referenced before. And then on the one twenty by one thirties, um, just similar scenario, um, if you minus out the setbacks, it leaves seven thousand square feet. Our thirty-five percent max is five thousand four hundred and sixty square feet. And then if we went to forty, it'd be six thousand two hundred and forty. So, just some more.
That's good.
Information to think about.
So, let's pretend I was a fifth grader. Um, that, what you're saying there is the thirty-five percent would still fit with inside what our setbacks are.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, they have to.
Right, right.
When you mentioned fifty-five percent, what is the, uh, current, uh, school coverage? Because you said if there's fifty-five percent, then it doesn't affect the drainage.
Well, so, no, when they do the drainage plan for the new subdivision, the calculation that they're gonna use for the twenty-four, however many lots. Is gonna be fifty-five percent coverage for the impervious cover. So, that's the detention amount that they have to account for. Um, they can account, they can justify more than that in their drainage calculations, but fifty-five is the standard, our minimum. I don't have those calculations in front of me, um.
Hold on.
And I will, like, older subdivisions, I mean, our, our regulations are a lot different now than subdivisions, you know, that were built previously. Um, you know, obviously, a lot of our older subdivisions don't have detention ponds, you know, and then when they started doing drainage systems, it was swales and, you know. Ditches and things like that. And so, our more modern subdivisions, you know, have the ponds and things like that. So, um, our drainage improvement or criteria has improved over the years, um, so.
Mr. Hill, you have the, can you introduce yourself again?
It'd be quick, but, uh, there's seventy-six thousand impervious, uh, feet at Klein right now. But we would, we would, we're going to calculate, like she said, for the whole eleven acres. So, it's a little bit different, but, um, the, the thirty-five percent, like I said, the, this, the. The lots at Friendswood are bigger and the setbacks are more. Uh, I mean, in, in, in Pearland, Lake City, you know, we've got some three feet off the property line. I mean, if they're making bacon, you're knowing it, you know, but in Friendswood, we're ten feet on each side, twenty-five and twenty-five. Uh, so we have a lot bigger lots here as, while we all live here, um, and then we're covering less of it. So, drainage is not an issue. Since Harvey, everything has went from a hundred to five hundred year, that, that's. We're not gonna ever build a new home that will ever flood in Friendswood. They're just not gonna allow it, which is good. Uh, but we'll comply with all of that. It's just, um, the setbacks are big. It's just trying to get, to, to use the, the envelope. That we're given, which is already much less than other cities.
Thank you. Um, final answer, well, we think this should be discussed further.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll do some more, um, research and, uh, bring you some, um, proposals for the next meeting.
Are we able to get a subcommittee together that can dig down into it as well?
The ordinance subcommittee can, uh, can work on that.
Sorry. It's the best move, though.
We've, we've marked everything else off of our to-do list for this year, so.
All right, Adam, uh, Adam, item B, discuss the re- discuss the requirements and definitions of accessory buildings and primary structures as required by the zoning ordinance. Aubrey?
Um, yes. So, last year at our annual retreat, um, one of the items that we put on the agenda or the to-do list for this year. Was to, um, talk about, like, defining primary structures versus accessory structures. Um, and so, we kinda did a little bit digging into that and there was three items that we looked into. Um, basically, at the end of the day, we're not recommending any changes. Um, we're recommending that we just leave, uh, the ordinances as they are. Um, we haven't had any variance requests for any of this. I mean, we've been able to make, you know, things work. Um, so, the first item was, uh, frequent complaints about requiring a five foot separation, um, between buildings. Um, this stems from the fire code regulations and it's actually being clarified in the twenty twenty-four, um, codes. So, we definitely don't wanna change that item. Um.
There's some, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, go ahead.
I know some of that can be overridden by the engineers, you know, if, if you have a structural engineer sign off on it and the city engineer looks at it and they agree, they can, they can vary that.
Yes, yeah, typically, that's mo- uh, common with swimming pools, um, cause swimming pools are accessory structures. So, we have accepted engineer letters, um, in some instances.
There's already stuff in place if we.
Yeah.
If, if it needs it.
Yes. Um, so the second item was that, um, many secondary structures in Friendswood are very large. Um, a few are bigger, bigger than the main structures. So, we were just questioning, like, you know, should we require a primary structure to be bigger than the accessory structure? But in thinking about this, if we changed that, we would create a lot of non-conforming issues. And actually, uh, Travis and I were talking this afternoon. I didn't even think about Poly Ranch, like. With their air, uh, the airplane hangars behind their houses. So, we don't, we don't wanna touch that. Um, we had, there are, you know, bond, barn dominions are becoming a lot more common, um, but. Again, we've been able to work through it, um, the building, the re- international residential code does require a minimum area and it re- like a kitchen. Um, you know, a bathroom and like a bedroom or something, you know, to establish a living area. And once you have that, it's a main structure and, you know, if the rest of it's a garage, then it's a garage. Um, so, like I said, we've been able to, um, figure things out without, you know, changing the ordinances and, and in compliance with codes. Um, and the last one was just that the city, our definitions don't include a definition for primary or principal structure. Um, so we looked at some other cities, some do, some don't. Um, but again, at the end of the day, um, I think we've been able to, um, you know, work with what we have and don't really see the need for changes. So, um, if everybody's in agreement, we can just mark that off of our to-do list for this year and, like I said, it's the last, uh.
Does anybody have any concerns with saying as is with that?
My only concern is y'all creating work for yourself. Although I do like that you were looking into it, you addressed it. And then, uh, di- through discussion, we realized it's not required.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yes, let's keep it as is.
Okay.
As recommended.
Thank you.
Laws are creating work for ourselves, right?
We have a new subcommittee with Marcus and Travis. Uh, next, communications. Item A, receive an update on changes in state laws as they pertain to the planning and zoning commission and land use generally. Ms. Karen?
Hi, commissioners. I just wanted to give you a quick update on, um, what's happening with the legislature. It's been a busy season, especially for cities. Just wanna go over real quickly some of the laws that are going on that we're gonna have to comply with and also just kinda show you what's happened over the years. This chart just shows you that there's been a steady increase in the number of bills that have been filed with the legislature and you'll notice about twenty-five percent of those affect cities. This next slide shows that of all those bills passed, how many affect cities? And so, of all the bills passed this year, about twenty percent affect cities and our operations. So, without further ado, I'm gonna go through some of the land use. It was a very heavy land use legislative session this time, so I wanted to go through those. I'm just running through real quickly. If you have questions, you can ask me or ask me later, but, um, I'm gonna talk fast and see if we can get through this. All right, so first was House Bill twenty-four. House Bill twenty-four addresses the situation that happened in, uh, city of Boston. There was a case that came out that made it really unclear of what type of notices we require for citywide zoning changes. And so, this, uh, defines what a citywide zoning change is and, um, it tells us what sort of notices we have. It also contains new protest procedures and requires, uh, posting of our signs. So, they have to be designated sizes and everything else. They have to be there from the very beginning when we ho- first publish our public hearing, all the way through council's action. House Bill twenty twenty-five deals with plats and replats and what's required as far as, uh, tax, uh, uh, tax statements, whether or not they have to be filed. So, that's, uh, been addressed. Also, home occupations, uh, home-based businesses, there's a no home-based, no, sorry. No impact home-based business is defined and it requires the city not to be able, doesn't, it restricts the city and does not require the city to be able to, uh, regulate those. We can still regulate health and safety and nuisances in buildings, but we can't regulate those type of businesses. You can't really tell that they're there. Doesn't affect our regulations or any regulations regarding, uh, short-term rentals. But development moratorium, it just states that it's a little more cumbersome in order to, to have a development moratorium. It's a ninety day, you can extend it for another ninety days, but there's certain very prescriptive things that we must do in order to have a moratorium. Mobile for vendors regulations, those deal with, uh, basically preempt the city from having those, uh, the states come and come out with their regulations and we can enforce the states. Ag operations, it, it takes, uh, mowing away from us being able to require mowing along the right way, provided that the ag, uh, uses adjacent to that, uh, right away. Electronic changes allows the city to establish a portal that, uh, citizens can sign up and receive notices via electronic means rather than the snail mail. Um, single family residential and SB fifteen, it doesn't really affect the city cause it's bracketed. However, I just wanted to let you know that their legislation is really after these large lots and being able to, uh, require a city to have, um, larger lots. They're really trying to get those down. Building materials exceptions, as you recall, about two legislative sessions ago, there was building restrictions that we could not enforce about the exterior masonry and things like that. They've tripped away at that a little bit. And House Bill seven eighty-five deals with manufactured homes and says that we cannot require an SEP if we don't require an SEP for other similar residential structures in a residential district. It also requires us to have at least one residential district where those manufactured homes are allowed. But it doesn't affect any historical preservation authority that we might have, or it doesn't affect any deed restrictions that were in place before one, two of this year. Um, protection of ag operations, it doesn't allow us to, uh, go after any nuisances regarding ag operations that they're already addressed by state law. Um, we have to comply with that. Posting of our, uh, service and assessment plan and notice of PIS assessment, those are our new, uh, two districts that we now have. And so, it requires some posting and more, um, transparency on that, so everybody can see what those are. Residential home backup systems, it requires cities to allow third-party inspectors to come in and, and inspect those, uh, residential, uh, backup systems. Um, it doesn't allow us to charge a fee for that. And SB, uh, eighteen eighty-three deals with impact fees. And this is will affect you currently. You are, uh, the capital improvements advisory commission, committee for the city and that's been taken away. No, planning and zoning commissions can no longer serve as that committee. It's now established that there has to be, um, the requirements of people that serve on that and it has to be a separate committee. So, we will be working on that. It also does not allow us to have more than, uh, increases in our impact fees more than three, every three years. For land use agricultural facilities, it doesn't allow us to, uh, provide, uh, the sprinkler systems in like pole barns and other agricultural facilities. Uh, single stairway requirements allow certain, uh, mo- manufactured home, not manufactured, multi-family, uh, structures to have with single staircase. If certain prescriptive requirements are met. And then, uh, House Bill forty-seven fifty-three deals with certificates of occupancy substitutes. So, if someone's lost their certificate of occupancy, mandates the city to require another certificate of occupancy that they can use and post. Uh, the cottage footage protection, it re- doesn't allow us to, uh, regulate this anymore and actually prohibits us from hiring somebody or continuing to hire somebody that tries to enforce that. Um, regulation of childcare facilities have also been, uh, moved over to the state and we can't, uh, have anything that, that doesn't comply with the state requirements. Assisted living facilities, I have this in green because, um, it does deal with generators and things like that. It does require assisted living facilities to have a preparedness and contingency operations plan. And it does require the health and human services commission to establish rules in order to have those types of, um, generators and things for, uh, these facilities. But that doesn't apply till, uh, the new facilities in two thousand twenty-six. Um, disrupting a meeting is now a crime. So, if someone tries to disrupt a meeting electronically, that would be, make an electronic disturbance, that would be a crime. Also, just, uh, through him for your benefit, if you see a, a animal control officer out picking up a carcass, it's a move over law for animal control. So, know that that's out there. Open government, this is gonna be a big thing for us here, cause it requires us not to post just seventy-two hours before a meeting, but it requires us to post before the third business day before a meeting. So, for you all, that would be, we would post for you all on Friday rather than Monday. Um, if there's a holiday in there, it's gonna be backed up even farther. Um, it also requires, uh, a physical copy of our budget to be attached, this is more for council, to the, to the, to the, uh, website. And have an impact statement also for our taxpayers. Um, digital newspapers was also addressed and it allows us to ha- use digital newspapers if certain conditions are met. Artificial intelligence training, I put this in there because you all do your, your training for cybersecurity. Guess what? You get another, uh, training session. So, we're gonna add, that's gonna be added to y'all. So, the first, the session went out, the first special session, uh, came in the, in July twenty-first. And it stopped, basically. Um, it ended on the fifteenth and there was no, uh, no real action that was taken in that time. Senate basically passed a lot of the bills, House did not, but have no fear, they started back up. So, they started back up on the very same day and there was about seventeen in the original, seventeen items that the, the, uh, the governor wanted the legislature to consider. There's twenty-two in the new, um, and they will end their second session on the second of this, of September. So, that's coming up very quickly. And that one could start again and we'll just continue on to continue to monitor those. But there's a lot that go on in the legislature. Um, I know that Becky and Aubrey are doing a great job at making sure that we're in compliance. They've had staff meetings, just making sure that we can make sure we're making, following all the laws, new laws and rules. And that's really all I had.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks.
Um, just for y'all, some of this impacts us pretty significantly, like the, uh, getting the notices out pretty much a week before the meeting. When Aubrey and Becky receive certain, certain requests from contractors, developers, they have a certain timeframe in which we have to get them in here in front of us. So, getting those notices out a week before kind of, it's much more of a balancing act for these guys, so. So, a lot of these things impact us a bit more than you may just know on the surface. Okay? Anybody have any questions from Ms. Karen? All right, next, discuss and set date for the annual planning zoning commission retreat in December. Aubrey?
Uh, yes. So, um, typically each year we try to have annual retreat just to review the actions, um, that we did for that year and then set a goal, you know, goals. And activities for the following year. Um, so, if everybody has their calendars. Um, so, we trip, typically try to do it really early in December before everybody gets crazy busy with the holidays. So, um, if we can kinda get a consensus on whether Tuesday, December second, or Thursday, December fourth, uh, would work for everyone.
Okay, so I have a conflict on the second already. It's already on my calendar.
Okay.
Sorry.
On the second you said?
I do have, yeah, I can't, I can't attend on the second.
Okay.
That's what everybody else can do. I can't do it.
Okay.
Does anybody else know of anything on that week?
Okay. Um, okay.
Can we maybe do the third?
It's a Wednesday. If any, I mean, I'm okay with a Wednesday. Everybody else is good with that.
No problem.
Wednesday's good.
I have a conflict, but I might try to move it.
All right, Brian.
Um, what about the next week?
Let's choose for the third is fine and I'll, I'll get mine in a minute.
Okay, sure. Yeah, the, the following week, uh, we already meet on Thursday.
Okay.
The eleventh, or I think it's the eleventh.
So, tend to, tend to believe the third.
Okay. Yeah, our regular meeting is on the eleventh and then we won't have any more for December. Um, so, it'll just be the retreat in that one meeting.
Could it be six o'clock again?
Sure, uh, yes, six o'clock and, um. Yes, yeah, I'll get a location and, uh, we do, uh, serve dinner that night. It's just a, you know, a little bit more informal. It's just a, you know, a little bit more informal, uh, planning meeting, so.
There's a, there's a few of you that haven't, have not been to one yet, but, uh, yeah, just come with, uh, ideas and and that, that's where you should, should really bring up things you think we should address in the next year, so. Okay, next, announcement of the planning zoning commission regular meetings for Thursday, September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, and Thursday, September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, item D. The, uh, July twenty-twenty-five DRC report is in the, your backup material. Aubrey, is there anything you, you'd like to mention on that?
Um, no, um, the business report was in your backup material as well, so just new businesses that have come into town um, or moved or changed names or whatever. Um, so, yeah, no, I don't.
Yeah, just a reminder with that there, um, that's a newer thing we started doing just a couple of months ago, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you get a chance, look through that, and it gives you a lot of information on other things going on around us. Uh, next, city council updates from our liaison. Uh, Councilmember Tranga.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I guess I want to start out with expectation management. My list is not nearly as long as Karen's, but I will not speak nearly as fast as Karen did. We didn't know she was an auctioneer in a part-time job. So she, the list was even longer for council's meeting, and she just flew through it. We were all, it was amazing to watch. But, uh, Tom and, and Brian, thank y'all for continuing to volunteer on planning and zoning. Really appreciate you guys doing that. Uh, the most important thing that council's working on right now is our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six municipal budget. Uh, on Monday's meeting, we've had several meetings on, on budgets and workshops, and on Monday's meeting, we did approve a hundred and sixteen point eight million dollar budget. And even though we've had a number of cost increases for the city to, that have been, made a big change, we were in challenge, made it challenging, but we did hold our property tax rate the same as it is right now at fifty-one point four cents per hundred. Uh, now, we will vote again. We voted for the rate and we voted for the budget, but we will vote again in September's meeting, uh, to, for the final approval. We'll discuss it and hopefully approve, uh, that in September's meeting. Okay, with that, um, in no particular order, though, I did, it was a couple of things I wanted us to pass along. We do have the, and I'm gonna read some of this, cause it, it's too long. Joint Ice Cream Social and Winter Weather Preparedness Event is gonna be held on Labor Day. It's over at the Perry Home. If you're interested, you can look up the time. I don't have the time, but it is on Labor Day. It's always a great, the Ice Cream Social's always great, and what a better time than sitting out in the hot August sun or September sun, uh, to talk about winter preparedness. So that's always a great event, though. Uh, please show up if you can. That's on Monday. Okay, we approved the, a letter of intent with the Friendswood Independent School District to work together on developing a new agricultural facility, uh, out near, uh, Moore Road, uh, out on five-twenty-eight. This, the city has some property out there that's contingent upon, obviously, the school, some of the school bonds getting passed, and, and particular for this, this facility. But we are, we did sign that letter of intent and working together with them to see if they can utilize that property that we have out there for their agricultural center. So that's exciting news. We approved the election of a new mayor pro temp. So that's, uh, Councilmember John Ellisor is now our new, our backup mayor. And, let's see. We authorized an urban planning services agreement with Adura Corp. For an updated the city's, uh, comprehensive plan. So that, you guys have worked on that, parts of that plan. I know Aubrey and Becky have been working on it a while, but we did, we did approve that, the funding for that, going forward in the contract with Adura. Let's see, and on the first reading, we'll have to read it one more time to approve. We did, uh, annex a piece of property, one point three acres out near the city, about the Lake Friendswood. So it's a, it's, we've owned the property for a while, uh, the one point three acres, but we're now pulling it into the city of Friendswood, uh, properly. And it's for any kind of small, maybe parking expansion or, or future needs out at Lake Friendswood. And with that, oh, we did, uh, pass a resolution naming the bridge connecting the Old City Park and Stevenson Park, uh, after, in honor of Friendswood former mayor Kevin Holland. So that was, happened in August as well, one of our meetings. I believe that's all the things that, uh, I wanted to pass along. Let me know afterwards if you have any questions. I'll hang around.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, next, we will continue with communications from our commissioners, and, uh, we'll move it around a little bit this time. Commissioner Conrad.
Interesting meeting, a lot of food for thought. There's a lot of, uh, all the drainage, drainage and, uh, different things that we discussed. Good, good meeting.
Commissioner Bounce. Oops, sorry.
Sorry.
Commissioner Bounce.
Yes, uh, I always wanted to thank our support staff, but I realize that we're the support staff, and y'all are the main staff, so thank the main staff and Katie in the back. So, uh, we really appreciate all the effort you put into this and making it so much easier for us.
Uh, Commissioner Phillips.
I gotta get the button right. Uh, I'll just kind of piggyback off of what Commissioner Bounce said. I, I really do appreciate the staff. You guys always have us really well-prepared for these meetings. Uh, I would be absolutely lost without your efforts, so thank you very, very much. Good meeting. There's a lot to think about.
Commissioner Anderson.
I want to thank the staff as well, but also, um, I really appreciate the, uh, public comments. Uh, there's so many insights that, uh, I would miss by just looking at the drawings, so I'm really, really glad that, uh, people come and the passion and the insights and the history really is very valuable. So, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Mann.
Thanks to everybody, happy to be here.
Commissioner Russ.
I don't say it enough, but thanks, staff. You guys do, y'all rock. You do a ton, or the most, I, I know as much as, like, Tom and I see, there's even more back there, plus all the other stuff, all the other responsibilities you guys have, so thank you. Thanks to everybody for sticking around and being on the commission.
Uh, for me, uh, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to serve, uh, on this commission another term. Um, I, I'm honored by, uh, everybody's electing me into the, the role here, so I appreciate that. Um, you know, one big thing for me, um, this is more personal, but, uh, as you know, my daughter right here's, uh, defeated cancer twice in the last two years. And I just want, I want everybody to know that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So if you, if you have the chance, get, get yourself a gold ribbon and, and, uh, just remember there's kids out there battling this every day. Okay?
Can we have Maddie come up and introduce herself?
Go ahead, Maddie.
Come on up to the podium.
Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
Just tell me, tell them your name.